Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. We're actually going to start with the Housing Authority, but before we do, can I ask Maria Stipe to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
If everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come together this evening to deliberate on the important issues before us, we ask that you would provide us with the wisdom to make the very best decisions for our community. Amen. And if... Oh, okay. me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, and with that, I'll immediately hand it over to Chair Kim Nguyen for the Housing Authority meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll?
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Bowie?
Here.
Commissioner Klaffenstein?
Here.
Vice Chair Dieter Nguyen?
Here.
Chair Kim Nguyen?
Here.
And let the record show that Commissioner Bridigum and Commissioner Tindock are absent.
Thank you. Do we have anyone wishing to speak during our oral communications?
I have no speaker cards for the Housing Authority. However, we did get several emails that are in support of the Stewart Drive project, and that was from Celeste Rivera, Lucy Dunn, Cecilia Bustamante-Pixsa, Roy English, Thanh Nguyen, Antonella Castro, Leslie Prado, Michelle Murphy, Tam Nguyen, and Leslie... Leslie... Oops, sorry. And that was it. Thank you.
I see a hand raised in the audience. Did you want to speak for the Housing Authority, sir?
For dying traffic on New York and Buffalo.
Okay, thank you. With that, let's move on to consent items. Item two A. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move it.
I second it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dieter Nguyen?
Yes.
Chair Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Moving right along to items for consideration, we have item three A.
Item three A is adoption of a resolution by the City Council approving a relocation plan, approval of a cooperation agreement with the Garden Grove Housing Authority, adoption of a resolution by the Garden Grove Housing Authority approving a home investment partnership affordable housing and loan agreement, and approval by the Garden Grove Housing Authority for eight project-based voucher payments for the implementation of permanent supportive housing located at one one seven four two Stewart Drive in Garden Grove, and this is a joint action item with the Garden Grove City Council. Mr. Robbins is here to give the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Chair Nguyen and members of the board. I'm here tonight to request the Housing Authority and City Council to approve a series of actions to implement development of the city's first-ever permanent supportive housing project located at one one seven four two Stewart Drive. These actions include the adoption of a resolution approving the project's relocation plan, approval of a cooperation agreement that would transfer one point four million dollars in home funds from the city to the Housing Authority, adoption of a resolution approving the home loan agreement to provide one point four million dollars in home funds, and eight project-based mainstream vouchers to American Family Housing for the project. And finally, approval of the agreement to provide housing assistance payments, or the AHAP, contract which commits eight project-based mainstream vouchers to the project. The city annually receives home funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD, to produce affordable housing for low and very low-income households. The city currently has sufficient funds in its home accounts to subsidize the project you have before you. The Garden Grove Housing Authority, as a public housing authority and direct recipient of housing vouchers from HUD, applied for and in November of two thousand and twenty was awarded an allocation of seventy-five mainstream vouchers. HUD's guidance regarding mainstream vouchers urges PHAs to utilize vouchers to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus by housing the homeless. In accordance with these guidelines, the Housing Authority's application for the mainstream vouchers included reference to the city's fight against homelessness and the need for additional vouchers to support those most at risk of being negatively affected by the coronavirus. Upon receipt of the mainstream vouchers, the Garden Grove Housing Authority sent notifications to all households on their current waiting list and to date have issued thirty-six mainstream vouchers to Garden Grove residents. There are currently no, zero mainstream eligible Garden Grove households on the Housing Authority's waiting list. The developer, American Family Housing, or as AFH, as I'll call them, in this presentation is a local nonprofit corporation that owns and operates the existing unrestricted, so there's no covenants on the property, apartment complex located at one one seven four two Stewart Drive. AFH was one of two developers to respond to a request for proposals for permanent supportive housing projects in the city. Upon internal review of the proposals, AFH was selected as the preferred developer to receive up to eight mainstream vouchers to produce a PSH project in the city. City staff, AFH, and our respective councils have negotiated the terms of the home agreement you have before you. A few of the salient provisions of the home agreement are that the home loan is structured as a residual receipts loan in an original principal amount of one point four million dollars and will be repaid via positive cash flow or residual receipts over a period of fifty-five years. The developer, AFH, will cause substantial rehabilitation of the project for a total construction cost estimated at seven hundred forty-two thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars or seventy-four thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars per unit. The scope of rehab includes improvements to the site itself, which is stuff like new fences, security gates, new trash enclosures, anti-graffiti coating, new irrigation systems, et cetera. The outside of the building will be rehabilitated as well with all new LED light fixtures, new roof, paint, windows, the all the flooring on the external property will be replaced as well. And of course, the unit interiors, new flooring, new paint, new kitchens, new bathrooms, it's all brand-new. Current residents of the property will be permanently relocated in compliance with all relocation laws and following the relocation plan, which is included with this agenda item. And finally, Garden Grove's investment in this project will cause all nine housing units to be income and rent restricted for a period of fifty-five years for occupancy by extremely low-income and very low-income households. So, based on the foregoing information, staff recommends the following actions be taken: that City Council adopts the resolution approving the relocation plan for the project at one one seven four two Stewart Drive; that the City Council and the Housing Authority approve the cooperation agreement by which the city will transfer one point four million dollars in home funds to the Housing Authority to implement the project; that the Housing Authority would adopt the resolution approving the home agreement and making certain other findings; and that the Housing Authority approve the AHAP, or Agreement to Provide Housing Assistance Payments, for the eight mainstream project-based vouchers. I have with us, or we have with us tonight Milo Pinehman, who's the CEO of AFH, to provide some additional remarks, as well as the City Special Counsel, Celeste Brady, who's here to assist with answering any questions you have after Milo speaks. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. We're really grateful for the chance to have this development go forward with the city in partnership to develop supportive housing. It's the evidence-based practice that structurally allows us to move towards going beyond managing homelessness to ending homelessness. Our agency has been around for thirty-six years, a nonprofit based in Midway City and very active in the community. This is my fourth year next month of the agency, and I'm just really grateful to have this chance to partner on this first in many ways with the city. That's what I think of as a win-win-win in that for the city, it's a chance to take forward a supportive housing development and working with the vouchers in this way and seeing how that plays forward because it works. It works very well, and in particular, the fact that the people who move into the building will be... The city will have its process for assuring that the people who move in the building are... Have a Garden Grove connection, who are very high in need and homeless. That not only allows this building to support the constituents of Garden Grove, but also will save costs to taxpayers. This one-time investment will be here for many, many years. It will initially occupy the building in the spring, and then on a natural turnover basis of one to two units a year, will be continuing to house people every year in this building who are otherwise homeless and in need of support services. I think for American Family Housing, it's a win because we appreciate the chance to bring the building to its highest best condition, to bring curb appeal to the neighborhood and customize the building with perhaps a mural that would really connect it to the history of the community there. That's something for next year as we get closer to completion. And I think for us, too, again, we're really trying to pilot the best practices of particularly bringing in resources from outside the community that might otherwise be tapped to support homelessness. So we're really having a few different things happening with this little small development, but it's a really big deal. And so, once we're open, we will have a lot of volunteer opportunities to connect with the community. That's a very strong base and foundational approach for my nonprofit, where we work with schools, the faith community, from move-in baskets when people move in to gardening projects and so forth. So we're looking forward to this next step in our relationship with Garden Grove. And again, I appreciate all the hard work for everyone during COVID, in particular. It's a very challenging time, but as you can imagine, thinking about people on the streets and what they're dealing with, this is a more challenging time for their situation. We will be a good neighbor. We're a good neighbor, and we will take very good care of the building, and we will work with the city on an ongoing basis to make sure that this is the asset that everyone would like it to be. So I appreciate your time today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Milo, and we're available to answer any questions you guys have. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask staff?
No.
I have a few questions.
Commissioner O'Neil had his hand up first, and then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Bowie.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I'm in support of this project. I just was concerned about the relocation process. Are the eight units currently occupied? All eight?
Six of the units are currently occupied.
Okay, and I've read through... I've read through the plan, and I've read through the relocation process. It sounds like there won't be a problem relocating. Has there been any... I haven't heard one negative thing about this project from anyone, so I just wanted to make sure that we won't have any problem relocating the existing folks. You don't see a problem with that?
No, not at all. The beauty of American Family Housing is they have many other properties in the general area that they can potentially transfer some of the current residents to. In addition, the city has over eleven hundred units of affordable housing that we'd be more than willing to extend to the current tenants. So yeah, we don't anticipate any trouble in getting them rehoused very quickly.
Thank you. And they've been notified about this meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Bowie?
Before I ask you the question related to the relocation process, you... I have another question that I thought I heard you mention that currently we have zero applicant on the waiting list. I want you to... I wonder if I misheard it or not. Can you clarify that for me?
Yes, sir. The comment I made was that there are no mainstream voucher-eligible Garden Grove residents on the current waiting list. So, the waiting list of roughly three thousand people, none of them that are Garden Grove residents are eligible for the mainstream vouchers that are being used to subsidize the project.
What do you mean by eligible?
So the mainstream vouchers come with two main forms of eligibility. One of them is age. You have to be between the age of eighteen and sixty-one, and the other is you have to be... You have to have a disabling condition. So either evidenced by a doctor's note, or you're receiving disability payments, but you have to be disabled, and you have to be between eighteen and sixty-one.
But I see. But there are still a lot of applicant on the waiting list. There are still a couple thousand, I think.
Currently, roughly three thousand people on the waiting list? Yes.
So, do we have to assist them as well?
So, when the Housing Authority was initially allocated the mainstream vouchers, they sent out letters to the entire waiting list, and they've since vetted through that list of all the respondents that got back to them, and they've been able to issue thirty-six of those people from the list mainstream vouchers, and they've exhausted all Garden Grove residents from that list that are eligible for the vouchers.
Okay, I see. Back on this relocation plan, now, there are six people currently living in this unit. I am very familiar with this neighborhood. Three of my friends live only a few buildings from these properties, and I frequently visit them so I know how poor this neighborhood is. And so I assume these six family are also, you know, low-income family residing in this unit. When we take over the project and relocate them, would they have to be relocated far away, or they are housing, you know, not so far away that they can be relocated to?
Good evening. This is Celeste Brady from your outside law firm, Stradling Yawka. This project is subject to both Federal Uniform Relocation Act, as well as the California Relocation Assistance Law. Each of the six households that are in occupancy now will be eligible not only for advisory assistance, but for monetary benefits. And to the extent a household is low-income or below, they are also eligible for something called last resort housing payments, so that there are housing resources identified in the relocation plan that meet the household makeup, how many bedrooms, proximity to the schools, their employment, public transportation, things of that nature. But this last resort housing payment is... Can be quite significant. That household that's low-income or below is not to... In their new home that meets and qualifies for the size and the characteristics of their household, they won't expend more than thirty percent of their actual income towards housing. And the difference is paid through the relocation benefits without a cap. So, just as a simple hypothetical, for instance, let's say that replacement apartment that they would move to costs two thousand dollars a month. They need a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom apartment for a family, and thirty percent of their income is only five hundred dollars a month. The fifteen hundred dollar difference for forty-two months is a payment by... Through Garden Grove Housing Authority and the developer, AFH, as a part of a monetary relocation benefit. And that is only in the instance when they are low-income or below. There is a cap if a family is not low-income, if they have the means to expand, and that cap is much lower than that. But we understand that these households and the estimated budget, as you'll see in the relocation plan, would provide moving expenses, last resort housing payments, and advisory assistance to move them from their existing location to a new location that meets the characteristics of that household.
Do you know if they... In which criteria they would be falling into? Have you looked at their family situation yet, to have that assessment yet?
I don't have that data in front of me, but the full relocation plan does... Was prepared by Overland Pacific and Cutler, which is really the most experienced relocation consultant in the state of California. I've actually been working with them since the seventies. Sorry to say how old I am. But that information is summarized without violating privacy information, but we do understand that they are low-income and below. And so, once they've received a general information notice about this project, they've received copies of the relocation plan, there have been one-on-one meetings with the relocation consultants and each of the households, and if this project is approved tonight, then they will receive more one-on-one advisory assistance. They'll receive not less than ninety days before they have to move out. A lot of people want to move out sooner than ninety days because they receive that eligible benefit, and if they can find a place with the assistance of this relocation consultant and Garden Grove staff and AFH, they'll facilitate their move and receive that monetary payment as well as the moving assistance and advisory assistance.
I care a lot about people who, you know, have certain disadvantage. I understand a lot of them, where they live and where they work is very important to their sustainability. So I am worried that if we force them to move, we would create more hardship for them, even for people who are tempted to move because of some initial gain through various assistance. But long-term, we would present more hardship for them than not. That is what makes me nervous when I do not see those kind of data to help me wait whether this is a benefit to those six tenants, or it will create more hardship for them. I certainly do not want to penalize one group for the benefit of the others. That's what I'm trying to gain when I will have to vote yes or no on this particularly item. So if you can provide me some information that, rather than just a general formula, it will make me feel more comfortable, why I move to another question, you know, maybe you can think about it or gather some data to come back and give me some more information.
Yes, and as a part of those benefits, for instance, if a household of four or five people is currently living in a one-bedroom unit, they will be eligible for a two- or three-bedroom or larger unit based upon the family makeup. So they don't put mixed genders. They don't do a two-year-old with a fourteen-year-old. The mother and the father in a family situation would receive their own bedroom. In that hypothetical, there would be a three-bedroom unit. If they were currently in a one-bedroom unit, they would be moving to a three-bedroom unit. They would be looking to be near the resources of where, for instance, in that hypothetical, the fourteen-year-old goes to school. Where, if the mother and/or the father work outside the home, where's their employment? What are their means of transportation? Do they have a vehicle, or do they use public transportation? Are there disabilities? Is there an elderly person in the household? Each of those... All of those kinds of criteria are outlined in the relocation law and in this relocation plan. So it is tailored and evaluated based upon the household itself, and then those monetary payments that I was talking about, and that... And yes, it was a hypothetical, are paid for forty-two months. So quite a few years, they receive that kind of monetary assistance. And sometimes, they're not required, but if the Housing Authority has portable vouchers available, for instance, the household can accept a portable voucher as a part of their relocation package. They're not required to accept it, but as you understand, you're Section Eight, housing portable vouchers are an important asset in this community to those persons who can't afford housing, and you have three thousand people on your waiting list, but your Housing Authority does have the ability to advance portable vouchers if a household that's being displaced by the public agency wants that kind of a voucher.
If we approve this plan today?
Yes.
And that would take us to the next level, that we talk to the six tenants, you know, more in-depth. And if one of them or some of them resist from moving or express their reservation, is there a way for us to come back? And this question for Mr. Omar, can we approve, you know, with a condition? Because I... It would make me feel easier because I... My main goal is not to jeopardize or put the six tenants in harm way. So if, for whatever reason, that it come back and show that this project caused more harm than good, is there a way for us to back crack it?
I don't think that it would be advisable to do that. This is why we have a relocation plan that's being presented to you for approval, and the relocation plan would actually take care of those concerns. And in terms of your initial question, how far would they be required to relocate? The plan indicates that all the household indicated a desire to stay nearby, and most... But most were open to communities other than Garden Grove, such as Anaheim, Santa Ana, Westminster, Huntington Beach, Costa Mesa, and Seal Beach. And referrals to available comparable replacement dwellings will be focused on Garden Grove and surrounding communities within fifteen miles of the property. So when you look at the relocation plan, they could actually... We could actually be enhancing their housing situation and rather than creating any hardship.
I'm not sure about that for a couple reasons. Number one, remember... I remember quite a few years ago, when we tried to execute the cottage industry project, we... The developer and the city was entering into some relocation assistance for people who live there, and somehow, I'm not sure what the reason is, but we've been... We were unsure by some of the tenant that the relocation, you know, caused them some harm. And it... I remember it was causing us a lot of heartburns between the developer and the city itself, and also with the tenants. So I wasn't sure. That's why it makes me nervous when we talk about relocating people, even though with a good intention, with a good plan, there's always possibility that it doesn't come out that way. And the second issue that I have with it is fifteen miles, fifty miles radius is a... Might be not a problem for some, but might be a major issue for others, depending on where they work and how they commute. I encountered some similar issue involving a mobile home park, not in our city, but in a nearby city. And the people there, even though the developer paid for the relocation, but it means that they will have to move much further away from Little Saigon, you know, somewhere in Pomona, Riverside, or all the way down south. And that creates a major issue for those tenants because they... Their lifestyle, you know, revolve around Little Saigon. Moving out further is a much hardship for them. So all of that thing makes me feel nervous when we talk about relocating people, especially people of low income. And that's why it makes me nervous when I, you know, have to vote yes or vote no with little information about it. That's why I asked you if there's a way for us to, you know, if it turns out that it isn't... Some people are not happy, for a good reason, right? Not because of greed, then is there a way for us to back crack from it? Or maybe we should slow... If that is not a good way to handle it, then maybe we should slow down a couple weeks, let me talk to the tenants about it?
Yeah, and direct response, the cottage industry projects, those tenants were not entitled to relocation because they came in after the public agency owned the properties, and it was in their lease that they had no relocation benefits. So, completely different situation. In terms of... I cannot speak for Westminster, but again, we are... We have this relocation plan being proposed and presented to you for approval, and, you know, we provided some of the highlight of the information in the relocation plan, and if you have any direct questions about the plan... And if you have any direct questions about the plan, so that's Nate and I can try and respond.
Okay. Let me ask the developer one other question relating to the relocation plan. We have 10 units and four unit is vacant. Is this possible? And I know we prefer to, you know, vacate them all and then we start construction, remodeling, et cetera. But if that is the case, then could, and I also assume that this six family is probably qualified for low incomes and so they might be qualified for staying there. Is it possible to renovate the four unit, the four vacant unit, move some of them over, and then renovate the remaining six unit?
Thank you, Councilor, for your concern about the tenants in the building. There are tenants today. We care very much about our tenants and our community and are very thoughtful and know a number of them for many years, you know, quite well without speaking in specifics. I do want to know, actually, someone, one household did actually just move between the time the staff report was generated and today. So, actually, it's down to five. And one other one is in the process of moving out now to move to an AFH-owned community over Midway City. So, I've been very thoughtful conversations with Overland, Calum Pacific, who are very thoughtful about these conversations and very, very careful about making sure that we're supporting the best path forward. And I think it's true, the comment that was made by staff, that this is actually an unusual opportunity for many households to have a one-time resource brought to them that they could make a different choice. So, part of why it's down to five households already is because this is an opportunity to move, to maybe make the move that some people were looking to do but couldn't at that time. So, it's just a little, I just want to complicate that a little bit. It's much more about each individual narrative. In terms of this specific situation, I would say we do need to relocate the existing households to proceed with the proposal, the proposed project with the vouchers and with the services that go with the mainstream vouchers. And if they could have qualified, we would have proceeded in that direction. So, I would note that the option to do that, what you'd call, I call that a rolling rehab where you move people around as you fix up units, isn't quite viable in here for those reasons. But I appreciate your thought process and those are the types of questions we do ask ourselves as we look at a community like this and think about the best way to proceed. We're not aware of any concerns or issues of the type that I think maybe you have in your mind. I haven't been, we haven't been hearing those. Does that answer your question, sir?
So, the bottom line is, no, you don't want to, we do not want to renovate the four vacant unit and see if we can move people around and then we renovate the remaining.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. That would, legitimately, that makes sense on the face of it, but there's other factors that make that not work.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions? I do, so I just want to make sure I pass it along. Go ahead.
Quick procedural question. So, this is, agenda is as kind of a joint action item between the Housing Authority and also City Council. Should we take these together? Like, should we simultaneously open City Council and here's together? How do we process this from the standpoint of the two agencies?
You may, you have those, you have two options. You can complete the Housing Authority action with the understanding that when, once it goes to City Council, we already, you already had the staff report, you just can take the action at that point summarily. The other option is to also call the City Council and have two separate votes at the same time. Either way, so long as the record shows that both agencies acted separately, that would be sufficient.
Got it. I'd say let's just stick with your first way you said that and just let this committee go forward and then we'll handle it when we get to council later summarily.
Thank you for clarifying. Just a couple of quick comments, not too many questions. First, I'd like to thank AFH for their wonderful presentation and their efforts on this. It was a pleasure meeting with you early on and having discussions. And I love that you mentioned the mural because I was about to ask about that. And I'd love to see some sort of community garden in the future as well, just for, I'm hoping young children that will be there have that opportunity. I think we discussed that in a meeting. I did want to highlight that I appreciate the work that went into this survey. It's clear that you guys did your due diligence. It was noted that, you know, one of the tenants was Section 8, that five are listed as extremely low income. I believe four or five had a physical disability as well as five or four others had some mental health issues. I was concerned to see that there was five children under the age of 18, that there was one senior, one wheelchair-bound individual. But after looking at the relocation plan, I'm confident that you guys will do everything in your power to ensure that these folks are relocated into the best possible situation for them. As someone who's recently gone through helping a family member recertify their Section 8 voucher and look for a new apartment, I have experienced a horror story with housing authorities, but not Garden Grove and not in Orange County, so I'll say that much. So, I just hope that Garden Grove really puts its best foot forward and does right by these residents because they are in extreme need as well. If we can ensure that case managers are meeting with them and speaking to them in their preferred language and ensuring that they're receiving whatever social services that they need, I'd appreciate that proactivity just because it can be challenging for someone who's been there. I don't know how long these residents have been in that unit, but for any quantity of time, you know, it can be difficult to relocate, especially if you have other social or physical mental health issues. I'm excited to see this come to District 6. I'm very proud that we'll be having the first permanent supportive housing in District 6. It's something that we've been talking about for a really long time and addressing the needs of our community. So, I'm really excited to see that. And I'd like to make the motion to see this go forward, but I see hands are up, so I'll pass it down. Mayor Jones and then Councilmember Duha.
Yeah. Thanks for coming back to me. I just wanted to make a couple more comments, more just to give some kudos. Nate, thanks for all your great work and your passion in this space. It's really exciting to see a permanent supportive housing project moving forward in the city. You deal with all the various facets of homelessness and those at risk of becoming homeless and everything in between. And it's a very complicated set of factors to roll out a program to address all aspects of it. I know. So, appreciate your hard work on this and it's cool to see this coming forward. AFH, wonderful group, very well-intentioned, very competent. I have full faith in their competence to be able to roll out a relocation plan. I'm sure they know what they're doing. And I've seen and toured other projects they've done before in Midway City and others and they're, I think we're in great hands there. And we could not possibly be in any better hands. And not to give her too big of a head, but with Celeste Brady looking over every detail of this kind of stuff, there's nobody who's better versed in all the legal, technical innuendo of these types of complicated agreements and projects. And Celeste, and I just know that she has scrubbed this to the nth degree and has thought it all out. So, I mean, I feel very confident and comfortable moving forward. I don't want to hold it up at all. I want to see this come forward and come about. It's one tiny little step in a very large, comprehensive plan to address homelessness in the city. And this is, this is a major first step to dive into the permanent supportive housing realm. And I think it's going to serve a lot of different purposes. It's going to take an old building that desperately needs a major rehab and give it the facelift it needs. It's going to be a huge benefit, I think, for the existing tenants as they get relocated to places more suitable for them and their, their family and living situations. And it's certainly going to be great for the new tenants coming in as well after the project is updated. So, I think this is going to be a win-win all the way across the board. And just thanks, everybody, for all the hard work and effort to bring it forward.
Vice Chair Nguyen.
Just want to piggyback with Mayor Steve Jones. Thank you so much for your presentations, very thorough, very detailed. And I'm really looking forward for this project to move forward. But I also want to add into, if we be able to follow up when we move on with the project regarding to the relocation, you know, we want to have a case worker to follow up with the tenants to make sure the success of the relocation program. And it's something that we can learn as well as we, you know, improve along the way. So, that's, we would like to come back and hear about the highlight, the success of the relocations of the five tenant right now.
I would concur with that. If we could get a report back, that'd be great. Commissioner Bowie?
Yes. I still have some questions. I just want to make sure I have the information I need before I cast my vote. So, thank you for, my colleague, for your patient. A question for our city attorney. One of my concern that I mentioned earlier is about possible or potential litigation. I do remember, and correct me if I was wrong, but I do remember a few years back with the Cottage Industry Project, the, one of the tenant or two tenant, I don't remember, but I do remember a major lawsuit against the city and the developer, Mr. Sahim. And then the developer also turned around and considered suing us, whether they came true, I don't remember. But I remember quite a few meeting to discuss that. So, in the event that one of the six tenant or some of them turn around and sue the developer and also sue the city, or the developer may also sue the city, you know, like what happened with the Cottage Industry, what, is there any clause to, that have been spelled out so that we are not be liable for those potential litigation?
I'll let Celeste respond to that question because I believe that's part of the agreement that we're, you would be approving tonight.
Yeah. The home agreement that's before you tonight, and I do recognize it's over 300 pages, does include indemnification by AFH of the Garden Grove, both the city and the Housing Authority. In the event there is litigation, that they defend and pay for litigation. You did mention the Cottage Industry litigation. There were two lawsuits. The first one, you're correct, it had to do with relocation. The title of the leases for those tenants was called a post-acquisition rental agreement. But in, even though they were not eligible for relocation assistance and benefits as described by your city attorney, Garden Grove, in fact, did pay relocation assistance and benefits and provided that to those tenants. They did file a lawsuit through a public interest group. That lawsuit was through your authorization settled. I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, that the cumulative amount to the total tenants was less than $40,000 because Garden Grove had already made a lot of payments to the tenants, including issuance of portable vouchers. But the lump sum of $150,000 was paid to their lawyers. That litigation was settled really within a couple of weeks. So, it was not a strong piece of litigation, but it was resolved quickly just to get passed. The second litigation had to do with allegations related to affordable housing monies. And there were five causes of action. And Garden Grove prevailed and got complete defense verdicts on every one of those causes of actions. They had 100% victory in that litigation. But yes, you did spend a lot of money on lawyers and, but they did, we did not spend any money to pay their lawyers, if you will. They backed off of the litigation and they did not appeal that litigation after Garden Grove did succeed in it. And so, this home agreement does require AFH, the parent entity. It does allow them to form a limited liability company to become the developer in this transaction. But we are not releasing AFH as the parent nonprofit corporation from their responsibilities concerning the indemnification and the defense necessary if there were to be litigation, whether that be by tenants who are being displaced or if a public interest group wanted to challenge this permanent supportive housing project that's for the betterment of the community.
So, in other word, clarified for me is for the sake of my mind, right? I'm very, trying to not to put us in any potential jeopardy. So, in the event that either the developer or and/or the city being sued, the developer will pay for, and if the city have to spend to pay for our legal team to defend us, the fee for that will be paid for by the developer?
That's, that is how this contract is written, yes.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you. I have no more further, I have no other question.
Okay. I believe I made the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie?
Abstain.
Commissioner Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dieter Nguyen?
Yes.
And Chair Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion received. Six yes votes with Commissioner Bowie abstaining.
No, it's six? Isn't customer Josh is not here?
Beckle.
No, he's absent.
Okay. I just want to, for the record, I just want to let people know that the reason I abstain is even though I am in favor of this project, but I'm not completely satisfied with the information and the answer that I have regarding the relocation of the tenants. I'm worried that some of them may be put in more harm than helping them. So, that's why I'm abstaining because I don't have enough information that I request an answer earlier. Thank you.
Any matters from commissioners? Hearing none, I'll adjourn the Housing Authority meeting and turn it over to City Council.
Thank you. We'll convene the City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember, Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Dieter Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Here.
Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
And let the record show that Councilmember Bridgum is absent.
All right. Thank you. We've already done the invocation and the pledge earlier at the opening, so we'll move straight into oral communications. I want to thank everyone for waiting patiently as we went through that Housing Authority item to get to City Council. So, we'll go to oral communications. We'll start with John Rolls.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, a project was completed in my area, a repaving project. I just want to say, not only does it look nice, it feels good to drive down a smooth road. And I want to thank the council for approving the funds, city staff on both sides of our area here, for all their involvement in the paperwork, and the Director of Public Works for picking out a good company. It looks really nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Aaron Downs.
Hello, friends of the city. Thank you for your service. I live over in Garden Park Townhomes off of, you know, New Hope and Garden Grove Boulevard. I am the president of the HOA Board there, and I go for walks every morning and I'm walking along and enjoying my morning. And one thing I've noticed is that there's a lot of cars that make right-hand turns on the red light. And they're doing that to bypass, you know, the waiting at the light or waiting to turn left because there's a long line to turn left during the busiest times of the day. And some of these cars, they come onto our street and then they do the little, you know, the little U-turn right after a little island with the plants on it. And then they'll go like left, I guess they're trying to go maybe to the Stewart Street, you know, maybe for parking, you know, finding parking over there. Sometimes they'll just go straight down New Hope, and other times they'll just cruise right on through and not even stop to turn right on the way to the high school because maybe they're, you know, parents of high school students or high school students themselves. And it's a concern about safety as well as, you know, I don't know, it just feels wrong that they're doing that to bypass the red light. But on a small residential community like that with the cul-de-sac, it's not a through street, you know, there's not really generally a lot of traffic. And it's very common for people to park out on the street and to walk across the street to get to their car. And I myself, having, walking across the street there, have had a situation where I'm walking across and not expecting for a car to do a U-turn on me all of a sudden. I've literally had them do a U-turn and swerve around me to get around. And so, I'm concerned about the safety of my community, as well as I've seen them like blocking traffic sometimes. And I've thought of some possibilities that could be used to help remediate the situation, such as a no-turn-on red light during certain times of the day, such as like seven to eight and five to six, as well as possibly a no-U-turn sign at the end of our little island with plants on it. So, those could be very helpful things. The other, the other item of concern with my street is that, and I'll follow the previous gentleman's leadership on this, and say thank you for repaving some of our sections of our driveways. But they forgot to do the red, the red painting on the curbs by our alleyways where we're pulling out. And so, now we're having homeowners parking right out by the alleyways and blocking visibility. And I keep on hearing it from my residents that live there, as well as myself when I'm pulling out, that I feel very unsafe because they're pulling out, that I feel very unsafe, because they're just blocking the visibility and it's not, it's kind of scary. And I'm doing this because I was feeling frustrated and I just thought, you know what? I'll just go do my civic duty and, and lift it up to all y'all friends. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Let me just comment real quick, and this is, this is not typically a back and forth dialogue, but I think it's the first time you've been here and done this. So thanks for coming out and sharing this. I've got your card and I'm going to set it aside and give it to our traffic engineering department to take a look at it and connect with you and just kind of offer any possible solutions. And also, thanks for serving on your HOA board. I have, I've actually served on several of those in the past, and HOA boards make city council look easy, because at least we've got smart people and attorneys to, to call upon if we get in trouble, and you got to just kind of wing it on your own when the community comes in.
Wait, have you been sticking to our board meetings?
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and council members. I'm coming tonight. We have an item on the agenda, 2A, and I got together with other nonprofit groups and we formed a committee for the community, and we would like to host the city's first Veterans Day celebration. That would be on November 6th, and we're requesting use of Village Green Park. We've got Senator Tom Umberg, who's a retired Urban Colonel, who will be our keynote speaker. We have entertainment hosted by various local Garden Grove community members, DJ Gummo, All Night Meet Bingo, Foundation Dance Company, we have the North Joint ROTC, who will be there as well. The Elks Lodge will be out doing the barbecue, and we've partnered with our local scout troop 1103, who will host the Kids Zone. We plan on having activity and booths for veterans and for current-serving military families and members, and we've got lots of resources coming out. And so we're asking for the council's support on this item, and we kindly asked that Mayor Jones, that if you would come and introduce our keynote speaker, that would be greatly appreciated. I am open for any questions on the item when it becomes available.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Raiber. Today was a good day. Today we voted to recall Newsen, and I was delighted to vote this time. I did not have to wear a mask, but yet we still have to show no ID to vote. That's wrong. Friday, September 3rd of this year, I do what I do every morning. I wake up and I get my hot cup of coffee and I walk in the front of the house and say, I'm awake. Well, except for on Friday the 3rd, September the 3rd, I was, had a bunch of concrete dropped in front of the house in the middle of the street. A neighbor dropped by and said he heard a noise about 10 minutes before. So I knew at 6:00 in the morning, I cannot call Ghostbusters, I have to call the Garden Grove Police. So at 6:00 I did. 6:30, they did not arrive. Luckily, I have friends in Public Works, Bill Murray and Alan. They trust me with their cell phone. So I text both of them. Alan responded and says, I'm going to work. Once I get there and get my truck, I'll come over to your house. He arrived at my house at 7:15 in the morning. We loaded up his vehicle with the concrete in the middle of the street. But before he came there, I witnessed almost two accidents in front of my own house. Where were the police? Alan stayed there. The police showed up one hour and 40 minutes later. If you look at Pino Code 374.3, it is unlawful to dump in the public street. It's a $1,000 fine. When I call the police, most of the time I do star 67 to block my number. I did give him my address. I did not give him my name. When the officer showed up, first thing he asked me is, show me your ID. The only time legally the police could ask for that is only when you commit a crime. What crime did I commit? For me to call the police because there's concrete in front of my house? That's not a crime. So think about it. You 7th, or you 6th up there in U. City Hall, and the police on the other side of this frickin' wall. Think about it. Think about it. I want to, I want to have a meeting with Steve Jones and the chief. I've sent emails and I've talked to him and nobody wants to. You want, you guys want, want to stop me from coming here? Let's talk.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilmember, City Manager, City Attorney, Staff, Community Member here and at home. It's good to see you back again. And my name is Tanya. I am a, an ambassador for USA Pickleball. And as many of you might have heard of it, it's the fastest-growing sport in America, and it has like sweeping the country and the world currently this week as we speak at Miles Square Park, Fountain Valley Tennis Center, the West Region Pickleball, which California and Hawaii, we are belong to West Region. We are having the major tournament there this week, starting Monday through Sunday. So there are like thousand of players and, you know, spectator. So the city, as I know, city of Garden Grove don't have our own courts yet, and we have a huge demand for more pickleball courts. So if, I just want to speak and I would like to raise awareness, and if you could please look into it, we have several parks in Garden Grove, on the tennis court and basketball courts. We can make it a dual line for both sports. One tennis court can convert into four pickleball courts, and the size is much smaller, is more, it's easier for the body, easy to learn. You can see three generations of grandparents, parent and grandkids play in one game. It's so much fun, it's healthy sports, and it certainly can bring more, you know, activity and revenue to the city and make the city healthier. And so this is a pair, pickleball and the ball. So it's a combination of tennis, ping pong and badminton. So if you have any of those sport background, you can certainly transfer it very quick, but you don't have to. You can just start out from no sport background. So hopefully next time we can have an opportunity to get on agenda, if we can have a presentation. And so I've been helping get the pickleball at Fountain Valley and other city around Orange County here, so would love to see it in Garden Grove. Do you have any questions? You have my cards here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak who did not turn in a red card? Please come forward.
Hi, Mayor, Council and Staff. My name is Don Wershauer, and I live in the Civic Center area, and I want to circle back to the cottage industries. I was very hopeful when you guys decided to do that, and, but I see no advancement. If anything, I think the lack of activity has devalued my house. I really do. I think I lost about $70,000 the last three months, where everything else is going up. And so far as the cottage industries, it's a big thumbs down. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Again, since I don't think you've been here before, this isn't generally a two-way dialogue, but thank you for coming out, and I think you'll be happy to hear that there's some very positive news coming out about that very, very soon. They're just about over the hump, so. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? With that, we will close oral communications and move on to written communications, and we do have one item on there, which is item 2A.
Item 2A is consideration of a written request from the California Nevada District Exchange Club's Charitable Foundation, Inc., for cosponsorship of the first annual Garden Grove Veterans Day celebration. Ms. Palio from the Community Services Department is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The California Nevada District Exchange Club's Charitable Foundation is requesting cosponsorship of the first annual Garden Grove Veterans Day celebration to be held at Village Green Park on Saturday, November 6th. The California Nevada District Exchange Club's Charitable Foundation is a 501(c)(3) organization that is in good standing with the California State Attorney General's Office and the IRS. The organization is organizing the first event here in the city, a celebration to salute all of our veterans and all those currently serving, and all military families in the community. The event will include entertainment, kids activities, resource booths, and a keynote address. Cosponsorship for the event includes waiving the rental fee of the Showmobile stage, which is $250, and the cost for staff to set up the stage, which is approximately $120. The total amount waived for this request is $370. It is recommended that the city council consider this cosponsorship request. Staff as well as representatives from the organization are available to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I think this is a great project. I am sure we want to make sure that the veterans know that we appreciate their sacrifice for our nation. This one, one question I have is, I don't see any, you know, US Veterans Chapter, the Legion of America is in this project, and I wonder, you know, we are doing this for the veterans, and I would get surprised to see that we do not include any of their in this project. Is there any reason, or maybe, maybe they're already involved, but it was just not spelled out in here?
Mayor Jones, can I piggyback off of that comment, because my question's in line with Councilmember Bowie's, if that's okay? So I have a few questions and concerns with this item. I'd like for, first, I'd like to request that if we could push this out to the next meeting pending more information. I contacted the OC Veterans Advisory Council, and they were not aware of the, the lead organization, and were not informed about the event. Also, the Veterans Business Network of SOCal, as well as the OC Veterans and Military Families Collaborative. I would like to see who's on the planning committee, if the American Legion's involved, the VFW, AmVets, especially since AmVets is located in Garden Grove. I do believe that the Veterans Resource Center, I'm not sure if that's the correct name, from Coastline Community College, is involved, mainly because they were requested to use the parking lot. And I spoke to Senator Umberg's office, and they were under the impression that Coastline Community College was the lead organization, and they in fact are not, but they are on the planning committee. I looked up the California Nevada District Exchange Club's Charitable Foundation, Inc. website, and it didn't have a lot of information, so I'm curious to have more information about that nonprofit and its involvement with veterans. I'm a huge proponent and advocate for the veteran community here, especially in Garden Grove, as I've requested for veteran banners to be placed in the city. I worked with John and his staff alongside our congressional members a few years ago, pre-COVID, to institute the first Garden Grove Veterans Day event here in Garden Grove, and we are working towards planning for the second one. So I'm a little disappointed that the co-host didn't reach out to the city, to council members, although I do see listed in the, the letter that council members were involved. And if that's the case, I'm a little disappointed that my colleagues didn't share this earlier on, because it seems like this is, you know, well underway to be, it's already planned. And so I have questions about that, as well as a staff's involvement with approving permits for this event. I saw that it's listed that will be recognized as a Colonel sponsorship. I'm curious to know what are the level of sponsorships? I didn't find any of that information. I just want to make sure that we're also not going to be liable for anything. We've seen other cities have some veterans issues and, and some drama, and I would love to avoid that for Garden Grove, since this should be a, a moment to honor and celebrate our veterans. And so if we could just get some more information, I know I'm putting you on the spot, so you may not have everything here today. If we could push this to the next city council meeting to get more information, I'd feel more comfortable with that, because at this time I would be a no vote.
Thank you. Do you have any continued items you wanted to continue going?
No, I prefer it to be continued on, because I think, well, first of all, there's nothing wrong with trying to, you know, praise our veterans. I think that's very important. So I'm, in principle, I'm fully supportive of that, but I would like to see if the veterans are involved in it, and so I would, I would support, because Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen requests to kick it out to the next council meeting, so we have time to talk to other people, and you may also have time to talk to the American Legion.
Thank you. We, oh, sorry.
Hold on one sec. It's not a public hearing, it's a written communication. Colleagues, if you're okay, we can ask her to chime in on your comments.
No, I don't need to.
What's that? Yeah, okay, please go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, this project started last year in January, and right before COVID. I had spoke to council member in my district, Burgerman, and Stephanie and I co-opted, we tried to connect, and then she, you know, COVID hit, everything kind of just shut us all down in communications. We continued to try to move forward in planning the event, reaching out to various organizations. It's myself that started it. I got Don Taylor, we started getting other folks, Coastline Community College came on board, several other service clubs. I did my best to reach out to as many service clubs, many did not respond to me. If the American Legion or any organization wishes to participate, I'm more than happy to have them there. But again, you know, working full-time, doing the best that we can, that's really it. We wanted to start a foundation to grow off of. That's what this plan is. This is something, the city does not have a Veterans Day program, that's an official Veterans Day event, and that's what the concept behind this was. The Exchange Clubs is a national service club organization, and we honor veterans, support them in housing, services. One of our charter clubs, Tustin Exchange Club, which I was the founding member of, we support the Tustin Veterans Housing over there. That group over there has paid for all the food, their, the roof, I mean, thousands and thousands of dollars are raised to house the homeless veterans there. So we're always doing things. Yes, our district website is very limited in information. We have it under contract right now for revision, but again, we're a nonprofit. We, the only money that's raised is by the dues from members. We don't have any other monies. We don't have staff. So that's another thing. This is all volunteer-driven. We will do our best, and again, we have, through Coastline Community College, they have reached out to county veterans resource groups. I have a list of them. I'm more than happy to provide all of that. Delaying it two weeks would shut down the event, because we have to continue moving forward in planning and fundraising. So, you know, I respect the city's, you know, viewpoint and your concerns, but again, we're just starting off. This is our first time we grow, and that's our plan. You know, you got to start small and then grow into it. So, you know, challenges, I can't come to a lot of daytime stuff or a lot of meetings. I have to do that around what's available in the evenings and nights, and that's a challenge for a lot of folks. But again, with COVID, I haven't reached out to council, out of respect to trying to limit that contact and communication again. So if that's something that you're open to and would like, I'm more than happy to reach out again.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead.
I understand that everybody has to start from somewhere, and so everybody needs
I understand that everybody has to start from somewhere, and so everybody needs a springboard, and in the beginning, you're working off a skeleton crew, and you're trying to build something up from nothing and try to build that traction, and you're trying to put together different people that can help and support, and maybe do have some name recognition to bolster and so forth. So I understand all of that, and I certainly don't want to see this event canceled. Definitely not. We need to do everything we can to support our veterans. I think between all of us here, sitting up here, we all have deeply rooted connections to different veteran groups, organizations, boards, committees, and so forth, that I think we could maybe help you with and find a way through city staff and so forth to connect you to them. And maybe if we can try to work on that as a commitment to help bolster and help the event, maybe we can move forward with this tonight, and then you can report back to us with if those connections have been made and how you're doing and moving forward, kind of as just a progress report as you go, leading up to the event. Maybe that would help.
Absolutely. Any support is more than welcome, more than welcome.
Could you maybe address Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen's comments about not engaging with the credible veterans groups within Orange County or something, or that they're, I mean, that's concerning to me a little bit from a standpoint of like, okay, so if you're doing this in a vacuum without engaging the existing sort of credible veterans groups and whatever and on a shoestring, then is anybody even going to show up? Is it going to be a successful event? Is it going to be?
We have been reaching out through, Coastline Community College is helping us with this, and they've been reaching out to several county organizations that have committed to coming to the event. So I have the list at home, I didn't bring it with me, I didn't think to bring it, but we do have about six different veterans resource groups that have committed to coming through them, and they've been very helpful to us. And again, it's, I'm, you know, trying to get everybody going. We meet, you know, once a month and go through these items, and, you know, we have lots of ideas. In fact, I actually had to kind of tailor it back a bit, because it was getting so big, it made me nervous, because again, I didn't know what to expect on a first-time event, so.
I'll just follow up and say, you know, I appreciate the efforts that you're making. I guess for me, it's just a big concern, because I know two years ago, when we initiated the Garden Grove Veterans Day pinning ceremony event, another event was also trying to come about, and there was a lot of conversations and issues with that group trying to have that event in Garden Grove. And, you know, I hold the veterans groups and the chairs of those organizations in Orange County near and dear to my heart, as I was an intern and worked with them very closely. And so when they tell me they've never heard of the organization, or they've never been invited, or been reached out to, or even aware that this is happening, I have some serious concerns with that, which is why I worked with the congressional, with Congressman Lou Creya's office and Congressman Lowenthal's office to create an event in Garden Grove, so that, you know, we did have something, because to your point, we never did. With COVID, obviously, we didn't have those events. And so I did confirm that the Coastline Community College Veterans Resource Center is working with them, but to my knowledge, there wasn't a big response as far as getting the other organizations on board. And I'm not quite sure how the $370 for the Showmobile would, you know, kind of make, within the next two weeks, completely halt the event. I would really like to see more information come back and see the list and ensure that the OC Veterans Advisory Council, that the Veterans Business Network, especially the OC Veterans and Military Families Collaborative are involved and aware of this event, just to dot our i's and cross our t's. I do not want to see the city, especially if you're requesting sponsorship, and that's what this is approved for, that, you know, we're on the up and up with our veterans groups and that we're doing everything possible so that we're not liable for anything in the future. And so if you could help me understand how that two-week delay would completely shut down the event, I would appreciate that, because I'm not comfortable approving this at this time.
As part of the planning, the stage is a key element for the program that we'll be having. By not having that, I just believe that it diminishes the whole value of the event. So that really is an important key component. The fact that, you know, I'm raising funds, I have to go out and raise these funds, that also is limiting the timeframe, because I don't want to be accepting funds from anyone if we're not going to be able to meet our obligations. Bookkeeping messy is really what it becomes. So we are about seven weeks out from the date, and again, you know, just with everything moving, but it's going to move very quickly. And again, I just think a delay of two weeks would really impede, you know, tonight was kind of my green light, we moved forward, I was, you know, you know, really needed hit the pavement for a lot of these loose-end items.
Hold on, Councilmember Dejere Tuhoen, and then Fat.
I agree with Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen in terms of that, two more weeks, won't hold back, whatever you're planning, especially, I mean, many of us have experience of hosting or organizing a big event. Believe me, we all want to celebrate a veteran, and we want to make the event as successful and as inclusive as possible, especially for the city of Garden Grove. Just like two years ago, we did host a Veteran Day, and it's very successful, it's a starting point, and then we want to continue that as we move forward. But the most important thing, we want to be inclusive of all the veteran group, the reputable organizations of veterans in Orange County. And that's why we want to highlight on that, and, you know, by holding two weeks, it's not going to penalize you of planning ahead against sponsorship, about the sponsorship. It just, you know, it's the city that we need to, want to see more organization evolve to make this event as successful as possible. That's what I think that many of us here want to see.
And I don't disagree with that, but again, we have to have a starting point, and, you know, there's only so many of us working on this right now. Again, I just, I've held and hosted many fundraisers, up to 3,000 people. It takes months and months and months of planning and organization to do it. At this point, we're seven weeks away, and that's going to give us five weeks. And again, I just, you know, if, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of speechless at the whole thing. I wasn't quite expecting this. A lot of work's been put into this.
And I absolutely appreciate that, and I'm sorry, I just, with 14 months of you guys planning, I feel a little, I'm a little lost for words, that we weren't reached out. You know, I will say that I saw this on Facebook a couple weeks ago, and I asked staff, like, what is this, where did this come from? And they didn't have the answers to that. So if you've been planning and meeting for 14 months, I'm just curious why staff and the council, I understand that you reached out to Councilmember Reddingham, but he didn't mention it to any of us. And yes, I understand COVID, but we were all meeting through Zooms, and as of recently, as far as I know, we're all vaccinated, and we have been meeting with folks in person, socially distanced with masks on. So I'm just a little bit disappointed, because, you know, the intent is always to do right by our veterans, and the city has an existing standing annual event, although did not occur during COVID for obvious reasons. So I just, I apologize, but at this point, if we can't delay this for two weeks to get more information and ensure that particular organizations that I've listed are involved and aware and in attendance, I can't support this event, especially knowing that the city is hosting one that does include all of these events, and there's going to be a formal pinning ceremony. I would have preferred that we would have been involved from the very beginning to partner together and, you know, do an event sponsored by the city, you know, in conjunction with this group and have it, rather than thwart, and have two different events and divide our veteran communities. I would have liked for this to be a collaborative effort, and it didn't seem that with 14 months of planning that that occurred. So I'm just a little disappointed, and at this point, I can't support this.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to chime in on this. Yeah, I'm, I think we should wait two weeks. I don't think it'll kill the project, because it's commendable what you're doing, but I found out about this at my agenda review, when I saw the agenda come out publicly last week, Friday, Thursday, Friday. Someone should have contacted us. I can't move forward, there's so many veterans groups that I deal with, and I want them to be included. I want everybody to be included. I don't think waiting two weeks on our decision should stop that. It's commendable what you're doing. I think we can still do it, but we need to get all the veterans groups on board, because I was taken aback a little bit of how this was on the agenda, and I hadn't even heard about it. No one contacted me that I'm aware of. But I need, I need to have all the veterans groups that we deal with, with all the congressional offices and our local electeds. I need to get everybody on board and make sure we can make this a great event for our veterans, because they deserve it. So I would make a motion to, you know, if there's a motion, or go ahead, go ahead, I won't make a motion, go ahead.
Sorry about that. I just wanted a quick clarification question from staff, is that this particular item is just a request for sponsorship in the dollar amount of $370 to provide the Showmobile stage?
That is correct.
Right? And so I can't imagine that that holds up the planning of everything else that goes on an event like this, to kind of hold this for two weeks to say, to just get some clarification on where the other veterans groups are on this, because to your point, there has been drama in Anaheim and Irvine and other cities in the county with veterans issue, and we don't want to get in the middle of that. We want to make sure that the credible veterans organizations in the county are on board and supportive and whatever, and that there's nothing sort of, and furthermore, we want it to be a successful event, and, I mean, I'd take to see them go forward and then nobody shows up, or that sort of thing after all this as well. So I think, for all the right reasons, it'd be good to kind of just stress this a little bit, maybe. Please, go ahead.
First of all, I would like to applaud you for, you know, organizing, putting a lot of effort in organizing a day to honor the veterans. I think, I think we owe them a lot, and so I, you know, really applaud you for that. The question that I have, the concern that I have here is two things. The Showmobile is nothing, right? It's easy for the city council to consider, you know, sponsoring that, because it's only $470. That's not an issue here. The issue that we, the concern that we have is promoting an event for the veterans that doesn't include the veterans. We have to be concerned with, you know, backfire. What if it isn't doing, organizing well in the military sense, and without the veterans, overwhelming veterans present there? So I think it's very important that we do involve various veteran group. There are AAVAT that just, you know, a mile or two down the road on Euclid, north of City Hall. There's also quite a few American Legion throughout Orange County. In fact, there's one on Beach Boulevard, near Westminster Avenue. So if you need connection to them, many of us, city council here, a lot of connection that can try to help. But what's most important for me personally is that I want to make sure that the event that is being held in Garden Grove, especially on public park, is successful and is well-received by the veterans community. What good would that be if we're trying to honor the veterans and they're not a part of it? So I think that's very important. So if you need help connecting with the veterans groups, you know, I and I believe many of our colleagues will be happy to make that connection and will help you along with, during that process. But it got to be inclusive of the veterans group in order for this to be successful. You have a request for the Showmobile. I think that's easy. You also have to get the permit to do this at Village Green, and without the veterans, I'm not sure if I even support the event to be held there.
Okay.
Councilmember Cloughenstein.
Is there any way to do this without the Showmobile? I mean, you have what is almost a stage in front of the clock tower. If you had someone donate to you a speaker system with a microphone, or you were able to get something like that, would that potentially be an option to use that platform as like the stage for the day? Is there a reason why it has to be the Showmobile in particular? I'm just throwing it out there.
I think it has to do more with visibility for the entertainers and the performers and speakers to be more on a platform than a lowered marble base that we have there at the clock tower. It's more, has to do with presentation and perception. I mean, it is possible, but, you know, when other events have been done in the Village Green Park, they've even rented stage pieces to come out and be put up, so, but I know we use it for Christmas. I think it's more of a perception and puts the speakers up above the audience, so everyone can see them. I mean, if we can do it for concerts in the park, I'm sure we can do it for our veterans. You know, I did want to mention, September 26, 2012, Garden Grove was presented a declaration of being a Purple Heart City. Up until 2018, when they did the, came up with the last-minute pinning ceremony, Garden Grove has never done anything for the veterans. I'm a veteran. There's 4,800 veterans that live in the city of Garden Grove. At one time, Senator Nguyen asked for, what do they call them, the banners that go on the flag poles, or street poles and lamps, to be put on Main Street. We set up a commission to do that, asked the city for help at that time. That's never come about either. Pinning ceremonies are great, you know, I've attended some myself, but as a veteran, they fall short of recognition for what we did and how we served. That's what we're trying to do, and we want the city council to be a part of it, to help us. And if you have the contacts that can reach out to us to be a part of this, then that's going to be fantastic, and we welcome that. But, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into this, you know, 14 months, that's a lot of time.
I'll just chime in, since it's crickets. I completely respect your efforts, and I commend you, as my colleagues have mentioned. I think the concern for me is, we do want to celebrate and honor our veterans, and we've tried to do that as a city, and to your point, it was a last-minute thing, but, you know, we worked very hard to include all of the veteran organizations, we worked very hard and closely with the congressmen so that we can present pins to the veterans. And, you know, it was not for nothing. We did our best with the time that we had, and then COVID hit, and we didn't do it again. And I did, I, I don't know about the senator at the time, but I requested for Veteran Day banners to be held, posted throughout the city, and that was approved, and they do go up. And so again, I would love to support this event, but at this time, I cannot. And I also, you know, to reiterate my point, in case my colleagues didn't hear me, you know, I did contact the senator's office, and it was very worrisome to me that they were under the impression that CCC was the lead organization for this, because an approval for him to come and keynote an event has to go through Sacramento's approval, and so they were misled. And, you know, they were asking me if they should cancel or not. I told them, no, 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 hold on, like, it's going to come to council tonight, we're going to work it out and see what happens. I don't think you need to cancel, just give us a beat to figure out, you know, who all is involved, because there was, this is all you gave us. There was no information about who's on the planning committee. I personally contacted the organizations, I had someone reach out to CCC on my behalf, and, you know, they told me they were working on it, but they didn't have confirmation from these organizations to me, which is alarming. And again, you've had 14 months to plan, you didn't reach out to any of us. We could have done a collaborative event, city-sponsored, worked with you, to expand what we were already doing with the congressional members, to have a pinning ceremony slash celebration event on a larger scale, because that's the intent, right? We kept it small initially, because there was some pushback about having one altogether due to staffing and time and funds for this. So I had to tell them, you know, just set up a table and chairs in front of the fire station, and, you know, the council will set up, you know, just so that we could make the event happen, because obviously, Garden Grove at the time was in a pinch for fun. So anyway, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I've just stated, I would prefer for this to be delayed for two weeks, so we can get more information, see who was all involved, and that gives you, you know, you have more work ahead of you, two weeks, get the planning committee member from CCC to get on it and get these organizations involved, so that we can get behind it and prove it. I'd love for it to continue to happen, I'd love to be there in conjunction to celebrate, you know, our veterans. I'm just, again, disappointed at how this all went down. Mr. Taylor, you were aware of the pinning ceremony, you've just stated that, and so the fact that you didn't reach out, knowing that we have a Garden Grove event, to me is also disappointing, because we wanted to do our best as staff and as council to honor our veterans, and it's a little disrespectful that there was not that communication. honor our veterans and, and it's, it's a little disrespectful that there was not that communication. So I will make the motion to delay for two weeks until we get more information and ensure that credible and legitimate veterans, or veterans organizations are involved in this event for approval. And I believe John will.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Really quick, I, I kind of feel bad honestly. I feel bad that you guys have kind of been blindsided this evening. I know as a volunteer in this community and somebody that's been a part of countless events, not every, every event can be full of pomp and circumstance. Sometimes they are more grassroots and a bit more homespun and sometimes you just go with other community groups and you put something together and you know, maybe not that many people show up, but it doesn't mean that it hasn't had an impact in the community that somebody hasn't felt, heard or seen and that it's not a win for, for the neighborhoods and for the organizations, excuse me, organizations in the community. So I just, I feel personally, I feel bad about this and I, I agree that there's some more organization that needs to take place. There's more work that needs to be done, but I think, I don't think there's any ill intent. I don't think you're coming from a place where you're trying to pull one over or not working hard enough or anything in that regard. I think this is coming from a pure place and a place of wanting to support the veterans. And as I said, there's probably more work to be done, but I, I just feel kind of bad that, that this has kind of gone down like this tonight personally.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Dieter Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
No.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, five yes votes with Councilmember Cloughenstein voting no to continue this item for two weeks.
Okay. I would like to bring forward out of order item 4A for items for consideration just because we have Celeste and Mila from AFH waiting for the continuation item or for the tangent item that we saw at Housing Authority. So if I may, like to bring forward item 4A.
Item 4A is adoption of a resolution by the city council approving a relocation plan, approval of a cooperation agreement with the Garden Grove Housing Authority, adoption of a resolution by the Garden Grove Housing Authority approving a home investment partnership affordable housing and loan agreement and approval by the Garden Grove Housing Authority for eight project based voucher payments for the implementation of permanent supportive housing located at 11742 Stewart Drive, Garden Grove. This is a joint action with the Garden Grove Housing Authority. That report was provided under the Garden Grove Housing Authority meeting. Mr. Robbins is here to answer any of your questions.
Okay, unless any of my colleagues say otherwise, I don't think we need a staff reporter or a repeat of the same thing. So colleagues, are we prepared to just act?
Yep.
Take action on this as we did on the Housing Authority? But I'd like to move it.
Second.
Mayor Jones, I don't understand. So we, we at the.
This was a joint action that requires action by both the Housing Authority and the city council. So Omar had a fancy word for it. What'd you say? We act on it, not simultaneously, we'd act on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So you're now acting as a city council. There are some actions that were required at the city council.
Yeah, this was the same.
There's a joint agreement between the Housing Authority and the city to transfer the vouchers, or I mean, to transfer the house, the home funds. And I think, what are the.
I can read the recommendations again if, if it might clear some things up. So the, the recommendation, staff recommendations that city council adopts the resolution which approves the relocation plan, that the city council and Housing Authority approve the cooperation agreement that would transfer the funds from the city to the Housing Authority to provide the loan to AFH, that the Housing Authority would adopt the resolution approving the home agreement and that the Housing Authority would approve the AHAP agreement for the vouchers, so.
So on the city council side, there's two items, the resolution approving the relocation plan and the approval of the joint agreement between the Housing Authority and the city council.
And the fancy word I was looking for is earlier Omar said that when it comes to city council, we could summarily approve the same thing that we did on the Housing Authority. So I'd like to move that we summarily approve the same thing we did on the Housing Authority under city council.
And I'll second.
Yeah. Mayor Jones, are we going to only talk about the relocation plan at the city council now or are we talking about the whole package?
It's the whole package and I presume we'll all just vote the same way we voted when we took an hour on it earlier.
Well, I, I, when we discuss the reallocation plan during the Housing Authority section of this meeting, I only focus on the relocation package alone and I did, I have some question for the other things and I didn't have a chance to, to get clarification for that yet. That's, that's numerous.
You chose to abstain on the Housing Authority, so I presume you'll do the same thing?
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not sure.
You asked a lot of questions, they answered questions and you still don't have enough information. You chose to abstain.
Right. I, I look at them differently. I may, I may abstain on the reallocation, but I may vote yes on the, on the project depending on a couple of other questions that I have. So it's, it's two separate things.
Okay, counsel, can you clarify the difference between the action item on Housing Authority and the action on this? If there is one?
I'm, I'm happy to. The, the Housing Authority is in effect the displacing agency, but the way the relocation law is drafted, the city council is the governing body that acts on a relocation plan. So by your adoption of the resolution of the Housing Authority, you approved the home agreement, you approved the home agreement that discusses the relocation plan, you approved the cooperation agreement as one party to a cooperation agreement between the city and the Housing Authority, you approved the AHAP, the Agreement for Housing Assistance Payments, which is the initial contract that's entered into before a HAP contract. The HAP contract doesn't occur until the real, full rehabilitation is complete. And so these component parts that are actions by the city council really focus on, if you will, the technical action by the city council on the resolution approving the relocation plan as well as just minute action by the city council to approve the cooperation agreement. The other actions were covered by the Housing Authority action on the resolution in the earlier part of the meeting.
All right. So I made a motion. Can I get a second?
I seconded it twice.
Okay, thanks. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Dieter Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Abstaining.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, five yes votes with Councilmember Bowie abstaining.
All right. Thank you for allowing us to take that item out of order. We're going to go back on track. Oh, actually, let's recess and take a five minute break per request.
The Garden Grove City Council meeting at this time. And we will move on. We're going to reassess over to the successor agency at this time. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll for successor agency?
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here.
And let the record show that Member Bridgum is absent.
Thank you. We already did oral communications simultaneously with city council, so we'll move on to consent items 2A and 2B. Can I get a motion?
Motion it.
Second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council. That moves on to consent items. It's recommended that 3A through 3L be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull any items.
Yes, please. 3C.
Okay. Any other polls?
Motion to move the balance?
Second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Item 3C, as polled by Garden Grove High School alumni, Stephanie Klaffenstein.
Yes. Yeah, it's very timely. I just wanted to pull this item because we're celebrating the 100th anniversary of Garden Grove High School. And this Saturday is the all-class alumni picnic at GGHS. It's the centennial celebration. And the Alumni Association asked me to bring an invitation, as well as this flyer. I want to invite all my colleagues and staff and everyone to the picnic. It's at 11:00 on the high school campus. There'll be carnival games, a kids' zone, lunch, music, and raffle prizes. It'll be just a really fun community event, and it's going to be great for those of us that are alumni to see old friends and get to hang out on the campus for a while. So, this is just my cordial invitation to all of you if you'd like to stop by. And obviously, as an alumni and a family that's had people at the high school since the 20s, this is a big, a big deal for, for the community and for Garden Grove. So, we're very excited and I hope many people can attend. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Oh, yes. And I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have to read it?
Second it.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you. That takes us on to items for consideration. We already did 4A out of turn, so just move on to 4B.
Item 4B is approval to participate in the 2021-2022 Office of Traffic Safety Selective Traffic Enforcement Program. And Lieutenant Viscomia is here to give the report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The California Office of Traffic Safety awards grants to law enforcement agencies through the University of California Berkeley Traffic Safety Center. These one-year grants begin October 1st, 2021, and end September 30th, 2022. The Garden Grove Police Department has applied for and received similar grants dating back to 1996. The grant was, that was applied for this year focuses on the reduction of persons killed and injured in alcohol-involved crashes by using best-practice strategies. These strategies include DUI and driver license checkpoints, DUI saturation patrols, the Know Your Limit campaign, motorcycle safety, distracted driver campaigns, educational presentations, traffic, bicycle, and pedestrian enforcement, and collaborative DUI enforcement. The police and finance departments will be responsible for providing the necessary reporting to fulfill the goals and objectives of this grant. The total amount for the 2021 to 2022 grant will be $278,000. There is no requirement to hire additional personnel, and there are no out-of-cost pocket expenses. There is neither cost nor income to the city based upon participation in this grant. It is recommended that the city council authorize participation in the selective traffic enforcement program, accept the Office of Traffic Safety grant funds in the amount of $278,000, authorize the police chief, finance director, and finance manager to execute the grant agreement on behalf of the city, and allocate these grant monies to fund selective traffic enforcement operations. And I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Lieutenant Viscomia. Any comments or questions?
Yeah. I would like to make the motion to recommend, you know, adoption of these programs. I think it's very important that we maintain public safety and traffic enforcement is a key component of it. And so, I would be, I'm so thankful that we're taking a step to participate in this selective traffic enforcement program.
I'll second.
Motion, a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you. All right. That takes us on to matters. We do have one item listed, 5A, which is a graffiti abatement update, as requested by city council from previous meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. At the city council meeting on July 27th, 2021, council requested staff report back on a variety of issues relating to graffiti abatement. The following items were identified as items of interest. Standardized colors. Four main colors are used and have remained consistent since 2008. They are light brown, which is used on block walls, gray, used on concrete, sandalwood, used on beige surfaces, and white. These colors are in addition to a wide variety of other paints used to cover graffiti on other surfaces. The contractor has policies and procedures in place that guide their graffiti removal, such as painting an entire surface of a wall if the wall has not been recently painted. This allows them to only spot cover areas of graffiti as it appears. Currently, the majority of the paint the contractor uses is from Sherwin-Williams. The Public Works Department maintains samples of the paint colors used so that residents or business owners, excuse me, may get the paint from the store of their choice. The second item identified was color matching. Since the Public Works Department graffiti abatement program focuses primarily on city-owned infrastructure and private walls that face the public right of way, staff has preferred to use standard colors to increase graffiti removal productivity and promote uniformity. Staff has inquired about color matching services with the contractor. The company trains all of their employees to perform color matching in the field. It can take the contractor anywhere from five to 10 minutes to get a color match while in the field. If they need to take a sample to a paint store, it typically takes 24 hours for the match to be made. While there is no extra cost for color matching, crews will not be able to remove as much graffiti each day, given necessary time needed to match. However, when completed, the surface should have a more aesthetic finish look. The graffiti abatement program currently provides limited services to private property, excuse me. The graffiti abatement program currently provides limited services to private property. California Government Code and the Garden Grove Municipal Code cover the process for graffiti abatement from private property. The code requires property owners or people in possession of the property to provide consent for the abatement to take place. This consent can take time to obtain. Private property graffiti issues or locations where consent cannot be obtained are referred to code enforcement for their action and follow-up. Private property owners are able to enter into agreements with property maintenance or graffiti removal companies to remove graffiti from shopping centers, apartment complexes, or other commercial properties. In addition to the normal graffiti abatement requests for the months of September and October 2021, the contractor will be implementing color matching and limited private property services. This two-month study will provide staff the cost to offer these services on a regular basis. During the study, the contractor will remove large graffiti from private property that is seen while driving down the road. Following the study, a full report will be provided to the city council. This concludes the report. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mark Bell. Any questions, comments?
Just thank you.
All right. Thank you guys very much. Okay. We'll do matters. I'll go down this way first. So, Councilmember Bowie?
Me?
Yeah.
I just want to express my observation that many of us who have been fully vaccinated and yet, I just want to caution people that we can still get COVID. You have, I have seen quite a number of my friends who get COVID. Some of them are very, very sick. Others just have a very mild, you know, symptoms. And maybe some got it but didn't even know that they got it. About two weeks ago, my family came out with some, you know, cold or flu-like symptoms. And I went to see the doctors and have it checked out, and fortunately, it came out negative. But many others, even though are fully vaccinated, they do, it may get to us. And so, that's why I'm wearing masks today. Not to, I'm not worried about getting COVID, but I'm more concerned with, if I get it without knowing, I may, you know, transfer it to some other people. So, that's why you see me wearing masks early on. It's a good idea to, to be vaccinated. I respect everyone's personal decision to whether to get vaccinated or not. But I think it is very helpful, and I would encourage people to, to get vaccinated if you can. And even after vaccinated, wearing masks as often as you, you think you can. I think that will help, not yourself, but helping other people that might be affected by you. I will not tell who of my friend also tests positive, but I think you already heard it. And so, you know, wearing mask and vaccinated if you can. Thank you.
Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Thank you. Just one quick update. I haven't given a vector update in a while, and I wanted to make mention that we have a meeting this Thursday, but I was informed that at this point in time, as we're sitting here this evening, we haven't had any mosquito sample pools test positive for West Nile virus. Other cities have had tested positive pools. There's 30 in total in the county, but Garden Grove is doing really well at this time. So, that's, that's a positive thing for us. And so, just to remind everyone to continue to dump and drain your standing water, check your screen doors, even under the little saucers that your plants sit on. Kind of choosing certain plants. Some of them collect water inside of them, so during the heightened mosquito seasons, be really mindful of that. Don't overwater your potted plants or your lawn. These are simple fixes that actually do a world of good in keeping the mosquito population down and also helping us prevent West Nile virus. OCvector.org is full of resources, and they can also come out and give your home an inspection and help you with further outreach and education. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Kim Nguyen?
First, I just want to thank Councilmember Klaffenstein for her vector control updates. I know those meetings are really robust, but I do appreciate them. I think since turning 30, all of a sudden mosquitoes just want to eat me alive. So, I always appreciate the reminder. I just want to thank two of our public speakers earlier this evening, John Rolls, I think, I hope, I hope I said your last name right, and Erin Downs. Just, you know, it's, it's always refreshing when someone comes up and thanks us for something rather than yelling at us or complaining about something. Well, I do appreciate it because, you know, we're just seven, or seven people sick today. A lot of ground to cover, and although many of us know our districts like the back of our hand, it's always helpful to have folks come out and let us know what, what they're seeing. But always refreshing to have positive comments, so I appreciate that. You've been here almost every meeting for the last couple of months, so I appreciate that. And other than that, I don't think I have any other updates. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Deidre Tuho Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to highlight, we have a new business grand opening in our District 3 over the weekend. That's QT Golden Marketplace. And in there, we have a 27 small business. A lot of them that eatery, mobile drinks, and some of them have found that too. So, I encourage all of us, all the residents to come, supporting local business. And the address is 9772 on Garden Grove Boulevard. It's the right, located right in the center of the Korean Business District. So, you know, come out and say, you know, buy mobile drink and support local business. I think it's a, it's a great thing. It's happened in Garden Grove and many small businesses. Grand opening and then very, making the whole area very vibrant. And that's what I'm trying to say. Thank you so much.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to congratulate, you know, Garden Grove High School on their 100th anniversary from a couple, from a Rancho Alameda alum. But I hope I live long enough to get to Rancho's 100th anniversary, which is in the 50th, 50th. I might make it, but I'd be pretty old. The mayor and I are both alum over there. But after you graduate, there's no animosity between high schools, right? We're all Garden Grove.
That's really big of you to like reach across the aisle like that.
You know, when I was at Rancho, it's rather be dead than red, but once you graduate, you know.
It's okay.
We're doing, we do good on football. Anyway, I just wanted to mention, I know a lot of folks would call me. Magnolia Park is under some construction. It's a public works project, so that's going along well. But I just want to let people know, half the park is still open. There, the, the main parking area is open, the basketball carts are open, and a lot of the grass area is open. But about half of the park is closed due to a public works project, and the tennis courts are closed. But we'll get that put back together, and it'll be a great improvement when it's all done. And then, I want to just, our last item. I wanted to pay tribute to the Polito family, a longtime District 2 family that lived in my neighborhood. Their father passed away, Salvador Polito. I've known Sal since I was 14 years old. And most of the time, I started paying attention to him. He was already retired, so I got to meet him and get to know him and spend time with him. But he passed away August 20th. He was born in 1935, so he was 86 years old. But longtime Garden Grove resident, all the neighbors loved him. Immigrant, Mexican-American, raised three kids. They went to Rancho. I went to school with his kids. So, worked hard his whole life rewinding electric motors in Anaheim. So, he had a good life. He, his wife passed away before him, and he didn't expect that. But he lived on another four years. And just want my condolences to the family, and God bless Sal Polito.
Thank you. City Manager Scott Stiles?
Yes, Mayor, council members. Two items. One is, we are rapidly approaching the, an early October launch of our BeWell OC mobile deployment. I just saw a photo just this morning of a beautiful, new outfitted blue van that I think is ready to start rolling. As you can imagine, my gosh, over the last, since we've approved this, we put a, we've, we've got a whole team in place. Folks from BeWell OC, folks that they work with, their partners with the county. Our police department has been heavily involved, obviously. Fire personnel from OCFA, our folks in community and economic development. There is a whole series of protocols and things that have to go into place about how the van is deployed, when they can provide services, what they can do, what they can't do, police, fire, all those certain sort of things. They've done a lot of work with bringing on some personnel that will be able to interact with different segments of our community, Vietnamese speakers, Spanish speakers, and a lot of different capability there, I believe. The important thing is, so we are planning for a big presentation before you at the next council meeting on September 28th. So, we're going to have folks from the county, we're going to have the BeWell OC folks, our police department. We're going to give you a very comprehensive update on how this program is getting ready to roll out. And we're, I believe, we're, the first week in October is a plan for it to begin. So, I wanted to give you a little preview of that. It's coming at the next council meeting. The other thing I wanted to mention to the council members, and I know you've seen a couple of notes on this. to the council members, and I know you've seen a couple of notes on this, the city of Garden Grove, we've received some of our preliminary census data. And all of those from our demographer, David Ely, all that data has been put on, you'll see it now on the front page of our webpage. You can take a look at that. And we've asked Mr. Ely to come to the first meeting in November, November 9, I think, is our council meeting, to talk a little bit about the process, what we do or might not need to do because of the data that's come forward. And I think some of the early indications, when you look at it, we've had a slight growth in population in Garden Grove, but it's really, it hasn't changed too much. So Mr. Ely's going to give us a, a good overview of redistricting, what it will mean or will not mean for any of our districts. So I wanted to mention that also and to let the public know to look at the data, and it's on our webpage. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. General Counsel, anything to report? We didn't have a closed session tonight, but anything from your standpoint?
No, nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Ira Bushinsky, who was involved in a recent fatal car accident on the 57 freeway. Ira Bushinsky was recently taken from his family in a tragic accident. He was 27-year resident of Garden Grove, who loved fishing, the angels, and the ducks. But more than anything or anyone, he loved his wife Colleen, and his daughters Sarah and Rachel, and all five of his grandchildren. On behalf of the Garden Grove City Council, I would like to offer my sincere condolences to Ira Bushinsky's family. And with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.